Thirty-five-foot linear pathway on the east side of Mountain View that currently exists, and that encompasses 22,491 square feet. You also have the cul-de-sac park at the end of Amber Court, the large teardrop-shaped park in the center of that one-way drive. You also have a 10,541-square-foot strip of land east of lots one.
I missed the knock. There we go. All right. Good evening. This is the Wednesday, January 22nd, 2014, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. The agenda should read, I believe, from January 8th, 2014. And there are folks with comments on the minutes.
One correction. Well, two names that are on the attending that were really absent, or maybe I corrected this as a draft.
Correct. So Jim Boland should show as absent and Nels.
Nels should show as absent.
And I don't know that it matters, but my title in the opening sentence is Vice Chair, and I think last year I was second Vice Chair. And the other thing I noticed, which again, I know that it may well be the way you said it at the meeting, was that on item seven, review of the ADU plan, open house from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., which actually was then scheduled 5:00 to 6:30. But that's maybe well what you announced.
I think that's what I said.
Yeah, okay. So with those corrections, do I have a motion relative to the minutes? There's a motion from Kurt to approve the minutes. Second?
Second.
Joel, thank you. All in favor of approving the minutes from January 8th? Say aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
And abstentions are Jim and Nels, and no opposition, I take it. All right. Correspondents? Anyone have staff have anything?
Just one item. The Harvest Hills addition was reviewed by the City Council last night, and they approved it with the generally with the commission's recommendations. There was one modification to the cul-de-sac that the fire department requested to be 96 feet, and the applicant is going to be reducing it so that's less than 150 feet. Therefore, then the fire department's turnaround requirements wouldn't apply. So they'll shorten that section of the roadway. So that was one modification. The other was that the council did require the provision of on-street parking on one side on Third Street. That was a concern that the commission had expressed to the council. The council members shared that, I think, concern, and so they did require the applicant to put the kind of pod parking on the south side of Third, really in the longer straight section of it, as was proposed in the Windfall Hills plan. So that was probably the more substantive additional condition that the council imposed on the subject. So with those requirements, it was approved by the council last night.
Pod parking.
It's essentially, it's widening the roadway, you know, to add the eight feet of roadway width for some distance.
Bump in, bump out.
Yeah, and it was through the windfall design covered, I'd say roughly about a 7- to 750-foot-long section of Third, once it makes the sweeping corner and then kind of hits a straight segment. They were on the south side of that straight segment. There was one kind of break in between where it bumped back out. We're not entirely sure what that was, maybe a mid-block crossing at that time. So the council indicated to the applicant, they wanted to see something similar to that so that there was some available on-street parking to serve the, you know, guest visitors, party.
Plumbers, electricians.
All the good, all those things.
Police.
So that was a condition approval, so I just wanted to inform the commission of the council's action.
It was very encouraging how long they discussed it, I thought.
Yeah, there was certainly a significant discussion about the concept of having a designated collector with bike lanes and no on-street parking, but this is kind of a residential context, so how does that fit? Is on-street parking appropriate for the neighborhood rather than the bike, you know, what's the priority between on-street parking in a residential neighborhood like this, or the value of the bike lanes on the collector's standard? And ultimately, I think the council felt they wanted to preserve the bike lanes and provide some level of on-street parking, and that was ultimately the decision, so.
Was there any discussion about the possibility of codifying parking requirements as an exception to the usual no parking for collectors?
There really wasn't a, I think this consensus, there wasn't a discussion of looking at this in a more formalized way, and it may just continue to be kind of a case-by-case basis, depending upon the block lengths. And we have a section of roadway there that is about 1,500 feet long from Mountain View to Jansen. This is just an exceptionally long block length. There's really nothing else you can do because of the fact that everything's developed on both sides and it's only so deep. So it may just continue to be somewhat of a case-by-case, but I mean, it's something that we should be thinking about as we look at updating the zoning code. You know, we don't have any type of requirements for on-street parking in residential neighborhoods or others. I mean, the code primarily focuses upon providing your parking off-street. But in most residential neighborhoods, there is an allowance because it's a residential street standard, which is either a 28-foot street with parking on one side or a 34-foot wide street with parking on both, and we generally don't have bike lanes on residential streets. We usually reserve those for those higher-volume, higher-capacity roadways. We're trying to provide that greater separation between cyclists and vehicle traffic. So, you know, the hope is we don't run too many collectors through residential neighborhood, or if we do, that they're rear-loaded off an alley, or that there's, you know, maybe have access off secondary side streets. So it may end up being something we just have to evaluate on a case-by-case basis.
Was the side street that they were going to shorten that one, did that have enough width for any parking on it at all? Because it just dawned on me that I've been in cul-de-sacs where there was nowhere to park.
Yeah, the street itself was a 20, proposed to be developed as a 28-foot wide street that would have parking on one side. The 150-foot distance would be measured from the curb line on Third to the center radius point of the cul-de-sac. So with a 60-foot cul-de-sac, you'd have 30 feet back from that line where you'd really be the cul-de-sac where there'd be no parking from the curb line into the street on Third, generally within about 20 to 30 feet. We don't allow parking because you've got a stop bar and you've got a stop sign.
Maybe 70.
And so you're, yeah, you're at that point where you're taking the 30 out, so now you're at 120, you're taking another 30 out, so maybe you're at 90 or 80. Then you'll have, well, you actually don't have any lots at front on that section. Those front on Third Street, or they could possibly maybe backload a garage off of the side street, which might make some sense. So if you had driveways, so you're down 90 feet, or you're down to, we start at 150, we took 30 out for the cul-de-sac, you're down to 120, we took 30 off from the intersection, so now you're down to 90, and at 24 feet, you know, typically there's our parallel parking space dimension, you know, you've got some on one side, assuming you don't have a driveway that's coming in on that side of the street from one of those lots. So you'll end up with a couple, you know, maybe three realistically.
And then coming out to Third Street doesn't solve your problem, then if you live on that cul-de-sac, there's no...
And as a 60, there will be no on-street parking allowed on that cul-de-sac. So, yeah, there's not much. You only had a few there, and even Jansen will be somewhat restricted as well because of the intersections and proximities, and it's a fairly short, somewhat steep section of roadway there. So, yeah, it was, it was an area where there wasn't going to be much available on-street parking, and the council wanted to make sure that there was some allowance for it.
That was cool.
Thank you. Thank you also, you and Ann, I'm going to say collaborated, to send us the article that appeared in a trip, I think it was. Small Lot Skinny House, I think was the title. Interesting to see. I guess one question I had relative to that was, do we have lots, platted lots now that are narrower than our lot sta... So some of this discussion could pertain to Moscow as well, we might have, in some of the older neighborhoods.
Yeah, we have 20-foot-wide platted lots in some neighborhoods, 40s in others. So, yeah, we certainly have pre-existing platted lots that are less than what may be our current standard today, which is 50. And actually, under the code, if it was a previously approved platted lot, we consider it not forming a lot of record, and it's eligible for a single-family dwelling. So if you had a 20-foot lot, and you wanted to put a, you know, on that narrow lot, you're talking about a 10-foot wide structure.
Talking about shotgun.
Side yard setback. So truly a shotgun. There's one right next to you on the side of the new city park on Lily Street that's kind of of that scale. But there are some of those pre-existing lots, and there may be some new lots in the future. It was just an interesting, again, look at that context. We've had some of those narrow lots as part of PUDs, so there's some that they've gone down to like 36 feet in width, you know, like for some of my lots, 36 feet in width. My house is 26 feet wide. So we're a pretty narrow lot developing this, it was about what like they were referring to in that article, although those were almost a little bit narrower.
Another little problem that came up kind of at the height of the boom more than now was having 20 and 30-year-old houses demoed so that they could slap two on their, on the lot.
Because there were two lots really underlying it.
Yeah, well...
And that's what's happening in Boise is that they're actually promoting that because they're trying to provide that infill opportunity. So a lot that may, they, in those existing areas that are close to the downtown, the bench, and other locations in East Boise, I mean, that's, they're promoting that as infill opportunities in these small skinny lots and trying to, you know, place three or four homes where there was just one previously.
Yeah, it just makes my teeth hurt to see a 30-year-old house hauled off to the landfill.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, the story isn't really as comprehensive as it could be. There's a shocking amount of narrow houses built in Boise, and it's really interesting to go into some of the older neighborhoods and see them, and so it's been, it's really taken hold there. The other comment I wanted to make is on Asbury and Almond, the lots that were all 20-foot lots back in the day when that was platted, whether that was presumed to give people the opportunity to buy a 40-foot or a 60-foot or whatever they wanted. I used that as a key to, you know, for 15 years, I did row houses in the studio, and we used, that was exact, so we didn't have to adjust anything. We just took the street on Llewellyn or Asbury there and used a 20-foot, and presumed that we were building firewalls between, so that we didn't have space between the houses. They were just 20-foot row houses.
And under our townhouse ordinance now, that would be permissible. That's all R4, the minimum lot width would actually only be 18 feet for townhouse units. So somebody could take, if they had six of those 20-foot wide lots and had an old structure that maybe that, you know, had served a serviceable life and wanted to remove that, that would be a permissible.
And because the alleys are in those same areas, we were able to give people, what I tried to talk to my students about was a basic three-story townhouse with parking coming in from the alley, so that you owned a piece of land, you could park your car in it, and you could have a live-work or a two-part thing going on in the house. In other words, we looked for mixed use in the sense that you would take over two floors to live in, give you 1,500 square feet, let's say, to live in, with one floor being for a shop or an apartment, depending on how you did it. So it's really an intriguing and creative way to get density somewhat different than the accessory dwelling.
Yeah, I remember pre-recession, one of the planners in Porta Lane contacted me about looking at infill, how to use their 25-foot, 25-foot and 20-foot lots sort of in the downtown area to start to work on their densification goals and, you know, to do some demonstrations on how people could use those lots, because they were just sitting there, you know, because they, you know.
Very vacant.
Yeah.
The picture with that article would appear as houses are probably closer together than we would allow. Does Boise have a different setback requirement, or were they using firewall construction to...
Yeah, it looked to me like three foot off the property line rather than five.
And three feet is essentially your building code limitation. So they may have reduced, I don't, I don't, you know, don't know what zone that was in, what the side yard setbacks and zoning would be, but you can go within three foot of the property line without having to do any type of fire construction. You start to get closer than three, now you're starting to kick into those standards. So you can get up to that where structures are essentially six feet apart. You have to be careful of eaves.
I was going to say, what about...
Independent clip eaves, and that's like Tepo has the clipped eaves all the way around because they're within, they're right up to that three and a half feet from the property line, so they've got essentially six-inch overhangs because they've had to clip them.
The other place that I'm familiar with that has that kind of density, Park City, I just came back from Park City and reminded myself, they do have a five-foot setback there, but also almost all houses in Park City in the old section of town are all just 10 feet apart, and narrow houses. So it, to all intents and purposes, looks like a row houses of block after block after block. There are hundreds and hundreds of them, and they're being filled in, and these little tiny houses, of course, in Park City are going for $800,000, $900,000, so it's pretty crazy. But people are liking, somehow they're liking it. I mean, you know, somehow being in, being able to walk to town is making people pay that $900,000 just to be able to say, hey, I don't have to use my car.
So that article is an example of one of the things that I used to enjoy. We used to be subscribed to the, was it the APA?
Planning Commissioners Journal.
Planning Commissioners Journal, okay. And once a month, we would get a copy distributed at our meeting, or is it quarterly?
That was a big quarterly.
Quarterly, yeah. And I always found that there was at least one article in there that I enjoyed reading. At any rate, that memory led me to go and have a conversation with Bill, and now I want to bring that conversation here, to think about being a little bit more formal about the sharing of some things that you might want to read, with the thought that then we would at least have a space where we might want to discuss them, much as we just did with the skinny house thing. And what I was hoping in that was, was there a way to also, in some sense, include the public? We just talked about an article that was in the newspaper, and the member of the public could hear that and could perhaps go find the article. So the thought was, just as a straw man, around the time of our first meeting of the month, we would work on collecting three to five URLs, which would be posted somewhere on the commission page on the city website, and we'd distribute them amongst ourselves. We wouldn't put them in the agenda, and then in the second meeting of the month, we'd have a space in the agenda to talk about, which, much like correspondence, sometimes we talk a lot and sometimes we don't, any or all or none of those articles, and just kind of do that as a cycle to try to see if there's some things we want to share amongst each other and share out that are generally interesting to us in the planning sense. So I, kind of putting that out there, I'd like to then hear some input.
Well, the wet blanket, one of the problems I can see is that the meeting length is so variable. I think if you try to shoehorn in, you know, it'd take 20 minutes or a half hour anyway to have a good talk about it. You know, if you try to shoehorn that in when it happens to be a really long meeting, that would be kind of low on the fun factor. So it would be, it would be nice to keep it flexible enough that, you know, you can do it as time allows. Then you'd have to watch out for the temptation of never having time allow.
So that could be something that either right in the course of the meeting or just by chair's discretion decide. I hear the, it's not required reading. It's things that perhaps you will find interesting is the goal that we collectively are working on. So it might be like the skinny house, or it might be like ADU, or it might be more of a traffic-related, I don't know, kind of thing. But then, yeah, if we've got some onerous public hearing going to land on when we might have otherwise talked about it, then I agree. I think it'd be better to either not do it or kick it to the next meeting than to force ourselves to spend time on something that was just going to stretch out a meeting. Okay, I hear that.
I'm agreeing that on certain meetings, long discussions prior to a public hearing are uncomfortable.
And disservice to the public, yeah.
Disservice to the public. But the general idea is a good one, I think.
I would agree.
I would say that the general idea is good and that there can be a lot of discussion outside of the meetings in terms of email back and forth regarding a certain topic that's presented. Something came out about the ADUs someplace, and we all had a chance to look at how things are being done in other towns and then discuss it amongst ourselves, and if it was pertinent to the meeting, then we could use that as an example or a, you know, piece of evidence about what we want to do, but we wouldn't have to necessarily talk about it at meeting.
We do need to be very careful that they are not things that relate to any of our quasi-judicial business.
Right, well, right.
So that becomes the concern about what begins to become an email chain discussing something, if they're topics that are interesting because of our work, and we, and it happens that it's also, it's about parking and Harvest Hills is coming along, you know, inadvertently they can start to...
It's a gray area.
Yeah, yeah. So, not to say that you couldn't do it, but it might be a thing to be cautious about.
Unseemly.
I would just remind us that because of, I think, Bill's good leadership in the last year and a half, we've had really interesting topics to talk about. So we haven't had a dearth of things to talk about, whether it's agricultural overlays, whether it's legacy crossing overlays, whether it's ADUs. Those have been really interesting and creative projects to talk about, and we've had...
I agree.
And I went through a period, we both went through a period 12, 15 years ago when we were so full of subdivisions that we never had a chance to do any sort of planning discussion, and that got a bit tedious and forced us to talk about whether planning and zoning should be one place or not. And in recent times, I think we've really had a wealth of interesting things to talk about, and that doesn't take away from your idea. I think that your idea is certainly good.
Well, and I think that you're right. The professional learning that we have done around several major topics as we've worked on them has had its own interesting merits, yeah. Well, so I propose then that I'll work with Bill a little bit more on this, and we'll start down a path, and I'll be listening for your feedback that this path isn't quite working, but we'll try it for a while and see how it goes.
What if, it may be too complicated, but setting up a blog opportunity for the public if they really wanted to respond and can enter the conversation, does that change the nature of the engagement?
So if they want to...
Well, if they, if we're posting this material on a web, on a city website, is, would it make sense to then have, and people can read it, would they have an opportunity to leave comments somewhere about what they thought about it, or does that just open us up to...
It increases the chance that you might get into some of the quasi-judicial angles.
With them, but not necessarily...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, but if we start to read that also, then we just...
Oh, I see what you mean.
Dialogue.
Okay.
We can certainly explore.
Yeah, because I wasn't sure if that was true when it's up on a city website where anybody can see it.
But again, it deals with, it's just like these, somebody was asking tonight, are these on the web yet? Are these boards? Because at least a couple of people tonight at our meeting, I'm getting ahead of our discussion, but I just, they were saying, well, if I can go home and just look at this thing for 20 minutes, I'm much more, somehow, it's too nerve-wracking to read it right here with people on both sides of you and what have you. And so a couple of people was hoping that they would be on the...
But be on tomorrow.
Web. And we, I think we talked to Michael and decided they were coming. So, but that's a way in which our planning kinds of things do get shared. And it may be the potpourri of things that we can talk about in general might not be as, maybe, it could be useful or not depend, but these projects that we work on, like the ag thing and like how many goats you can have in your yard and what have you, are really interesting ones to share with the public because they're the ones that need to know.
Okay, all right. And I think if, you know, any member of the commission, if you come across an article you think is interesting and relevant to the commission, I think sharing that, we'll talk about how we put it together, where it gets posted, but I'm not looking...
Right, I don't want to make new work for staff.
I mean, we will, we're happy to do it, but we also want to provide an opportunity that anything you see that's interesting, you'd like to share with the rest of the commission, that we can, you have that opportunity.
So is it best to send it to you or to Ann, or to, where do we send it?
I think for the time being, we'll formulate that, I think.
But you'll keep us out of trouble, right? You'll keep us out of trouble.
Well, see, that does allow us an opportunity to try this. This might be a concern of that, but maybe we can look at it, we'll put it on for two months from now once that issue is, you know, handled. Now's a good time to do it, so.
Your job is to answer the question, what could possibly go wrong?
All right, moving on, Transportation Commission, Joel.
Transportation Commission met on the 9th, it's two weeks ago. Major topics of discussion were the, well, the accident, when was it, close to a year ago now, at the corner of Steiner and Main, and considerable discussion as to, you know, possible, well, the nature of the accident and the pedestrian car accident, and possible lighting, pedestrian activated lighting systems that might work. I guess that's being further discussed by the city.
And they're talking about actually a pedestrian activated stop signal?
Yeah, it's...
Not just a warning pedestrian?
Yes, pedestrian activated stop signal. There's some issues there. We had the police chief attended the meeting and pointed out some legal ambiguities over what the rules are for a one-way, only north-south pedestrian activated stop sign at a four-way intersection.
Somebody might be making...
Where there's the stop signs on the, on the other two corners. As I say, it's ambiguous. Other discussion, further discussion about bicycles on sidewalks and some of the kinds of things the Transportation Commission is proposing to do to address that issue. And we concluded the meeting with a short overview of the history and nature of the Ring Road project, which was interesting. The next meeting will be, I believe, three weeks, three weeks from tomorrow.
Joel, will that pedestrian activated light come up again, or where will that move next?
As I say, I believe the city is investigating some alternative... As I say, I believe the city is investigating some alternatives there and I assume we'll hear more.
I think the Public Works Department is working with ITD to explore potential opportunities.
There are several similar lights. I believe there's one, one in Cartel Lane and I believe there's one, at least one in Boise. So they're not unprecedented.
Yeah, the, again, Park City has two of those pedestrian activated. We've watched it over the last 15 years in Park City, be this place where you could get run over for sure, 'cause it's like a bus stop, people are racing across the street and cars are screeching by. Then it turned into a activate, a flashing yellow light. And that sort of worked, but now they have a red light so that it's a real stop sign. So if there are people actually walking and they press a button, boom, up comes a red light. And if there's no one there, you can go on for an hour with never a stop. And so it really is.
These work simply if they're in the middle of a block.
Yeah. Is a rough thing. And the ones that I'm talking about are not at a corner. And I, I think that's a, that's a different thing.
Apparently the city has some hardware hidden away in a closet somewhere which could perhaps be adapted to, to serve as.
It's a dilemma.
As a stop sign.
I suspect we have some from the, from the Petersons crossing.
The Peterson one, however, was a, a warning light.
You could just change the color of the bulb, maybe.
Yeah, chase.
Well, being a pedestrian commuter and also aware of the numerous serious injuries and casualties that have happened in crosswalks in this community, including Sixth and Main when Brian Sumption's wife got hit, I'm really glad to see at least that's entering the discussion because I think that the focus personally of whether bicycles are on sidewalks or not, that's not where my fear is as a pedestrian. My fear is cars that aren't paying attention, that are texting and self, using their cell phones. And you have to step out into, you know, you cross the couplet, you have to, not, not at Jackson, but at Washington, you have to just step out there and, and when you see an opportunity and hope that the cars that are coming in the next lane are gonna stop. And so I guess, I would hope that, worried about pedestrian safety, it's not bicycle, I, I'm gonna live through a bicycle hitting me. I'm not gonna live through a truck hitting me. So I, I just hope that that's the, more of the focus on this.
Alright. Great, thank you Joel for that transportation update. And I agree, we, I think I would be interested if there's more to know about the progress, progress on that conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether it's transportation or the city. We are up to the open microphone, which is our invitation. If there's something on your mind, you can come on down here and share with us 15 minutes to talk about items that are not on the agenda or currently pending before Planning and Zoning Commission. But we have no audience tonight. So, moving on, we are up to a review of the ADU project public input session.
So from five to six thirty today, we had kind of the first introductory public input session. The posters that we have here were the ones that we made up for the meeting. Really, the, the intent was just to introduce the project, what are accessory dwelling units? What are some of the benefits of the ADUs? How do other communities address them? How might they fit within Moscow? And really tried to solicit that information from the, from the community. I think this will be kind of the starting point of, it'll start to build once people start talking about it and it gets out in the press. We did have, I don't know if anybody watched, I always don't watch myself on TV, but Kaylee W came down, did a on-camera interview yesterday. The Argonauts running R on Friday. The, we got the Daily News at least to do a brief on it yesterday and they'll do a full article on Friday. And the radio press was here as well. So, I mean, it's gonna start to, to build. So, we had, I don't know, I'd say 20 people, maybe 20 to 25, that were just general public that came through the meeting. And, you know, I think we're just gonna, this is kind of, kind of build both in folks that are excited about the possibility and those that are afraid of it. So.
Either side.
Yeah, so, so I think we're gonna get, certainly that will kind of build and that interest is, it will, will grow over time. I thought Mike and Becky did a great job in doing the posters, getting those together. They, I think they turned out very nicely. And we will, we just put together a pretty simplistic project webpage. We just posted it here this afternoon. So that's up and we'll get these posters posted up on that. And then we also did a, put together a survey, just as a, as a way to take advantage of folks' time, just pass this around for those who hadn't, didn't have a chance to take a look at it, kind of what it looked, looked like, some of the questions that we asked on the survey. The attempt was really, section one was, was engaging, repeating two of the questions that we asked in the citizen survey. So the pie charts that are on the, on the poster there are station two, detailed the responses received. And we put this on the 2012 citizen survey that was conducted in the late fall, October, November of 2012. And we got the results back spring of last year, looking at whether people supported the allowance of accessory dwelling units in their own neighborhood. And would they individually or personally be interested in adding an ADU on their property? And you may recall, we had to think about 63% as, across the city as a whole, that either strongly agreed or agreed with the allowance of ADUs in their neighborhood. We had about 17% that either disagreed or strongly disagreed with their allowance in their neighborhood. But we had a fairly modest response with respect to how many people would be interested in adding an ADU to their property. So there was interest and general support, but, you know, there weren't gonna be 500 units added overnight if they were allowed. And, you know, we talked about in the past, the variations from different neighborhoods. We had some neighborhoods as high as 84% about allowing them in their neighborhood. And so there was some variation, you know, across different parts of town. We did want to kind of get some baseline, again, asking those were the first two questions and really kind of looking at if they would be permitted, kind of how people felt that they should be, whether it should be permitted accessory use in all residential districts, whether it should be a conditionally permitted use in all residential districts. And then kind of getting into really the, the division between the R3 and the R4 districts and the R1 and the R2, 'cause we're, we're gonna see a line start to form there. And the, well, if you have something other than single family, these are probably gonna be okay, or more readily accepted. When you're into the single family only districts, there's gonna be probably more concern about the impact. And so we, we looked at that. And then we added probably last question just about, well, maybe not by zone, but by an overlay zone as being a mechanism to identify where to be permitted. So we're, those were the, the first section. The second was really looking at some of the basic elements of standards that could be established for ADU and how important they felt these various items might be. And then we had the back page to list out the, any other comments they'd like to share. We've actually put this into Survey Monkey on the ADU website. So we're gonna promote and push that. We'll do another press release. We'll make sure it gets in any of the media and the articles that folks can go on the website and give us, you know, this feedback. Even if you weren't able to attend the meeting, we'll have the, the poster boards up so they can review them. The survey will be there that they can respond to. We'll enter, we received 11 surveys back this evening. And then I know I had at least two or three people that took one with them, wanted to think about it and take some time to fill it out. So we'll work on getting all of that, that collected. The, I'm anticipating we'd leave the survey online to run about two to three weeks and then we might close it down and post the results of that on the project website as well. And, so that's, anyhow, that's, that's the early stage. Just, you know, looking, I think overall, and, and I'd like everybody to share, maybe those who are here who spoke with some of the members of the public that attended, kind of what you heard. I just did a brief scan of the 11 surveys we received. And I'd say, you know, of the 11, six were probably really generally supportive of ADUs. That's about 54% of the respondents. Really, either that they thought they should be allowed in all residential districts, or at least were, were, thought they should be permitted in some form in most residential districts. We had two that were probably in that middle line where they were generally supportive but thought R3 and R4 was the right place for them, maybe not necessarily in R1 and R2. And then we had three that were just completely opposed to, to them. To, you know, and didn't support the concept. And so between the generally supportive and somewhat supportive, you had 72% of the, of the, you know, between, very small sample numbers, but that eight of 11, you know, about 72%, you know, generally supportive. And about 27% obviously that was opposed, three out of 11. So with a very, very small sample size. But it was just pretty consistent, I guess, if you looked at the responses received before. It's not that dissimilar. And I guess the, you know, the concerns I heard, obviously were folks that were in single family districts wanting to try to maintain that, concerned about additional crowding and density and, and parking, probably were the, the ones that I heard. Did hear several comments about design and wanting to make sure that they were well-designed. So, and, and I did kind of discuss the fact that there are some potential downsides or detriments to that, you know, what design, to what standard. We don't for other accessory structures or even new, you know, single family homes. Why put the higher bar here? And so there was some, some discussion and debate there. But those, those were kind of, the bulk of the general comments that, that I heard and certainly anybody else can share whatever they, they heard with the group.
Well, you know, first is thanks for all of this and thanks to the press for starting to get the story out. And are we still thinking that in four weeks, we'll have some other input or?
I think right now, what we're, I was probably anticipating is that if we allowed the survey to run two to three weeks, we're probably thinking, you know, that, that we'll get this compiled for probably the second meeting in February would be my guess, if we can share that information. So it may be that March time.
Six weeks from now.
So maybe after spring break.
Okay.
Or we'll have to see how the calendar falls out, but we obviously want to avoid the spring break time period.
Right.
That we would do the second. And, and so we want to get that, you know, really compile all the information, then make sure we have a good basis of understanding of the input that we received to, to really map out the next steps. Whether it's, okay, we're gonna pull a plug on this thing 'cause it's, you know, there's all these concerns, or maybe this should be tailored to the R3 and the R4, or whatever the, you know, the, the public input seems to guide us.
One other question. Will the data analysis be able to help us sort out amongst these, this lower section here, these various attributes that might be sorted out for the people who said, I do agree, I'm more in the positive about them happening, or I'm in the negative? Maybe those negatives, we say, oh, parking was their issue. Or would we just get 35% were concerned about parking? But not be able to say, of the people who were, who were generally opposed, 80% were concerned about parking. Will we be able to get that kind of, covarying kind of analysis?
I'll have to look, I mean, we could certainly do it. I'm just thinking through, I've never really used Survey Monkey, so I don't know what analysis tools that are built into it. I know as we do our own citizen survey, we've got that ability 'cause it's essentially just into an Excel table and you can do whatever analysis, manipulate in whatever fashion you'd like. So my only hesitancy is that ultimately, I'm not all that familiar with Survey Monkey, we haven't used it that, that often. And I'll have to take a look at the, the ways in which we can analyze that. I think certainly we could probably pull the raw data out and just.
And do it.
And do it.
So I have some experience with it and I'm happy to come down.
That'd be great, yeah.
Consult a little bit or whatever.
That'd be great.
That'd be really good information to have, the people that were against it, tie in why they're against.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult. I mean, the, the few that I looked at that, that were against it, every one of those items under the design was extremely important. And so it was hard.
It may not be.
Differentiate, was there one aspect there that they were, you know, it just, it was so strongly opposed to the concept.
Do you, open houses and other topics over the years, do they tend to draw people who feel passionately one way or the other more than people who are just fact finding or inquiring? That would be my supposition, but I'm.
Yeah, I mean, anybody who's gonna take the time out to come usually is possibly motivated with an emotional response one to the other. But honestly, here, it's not that, I think we, we get a fair turn of people that are just curious about the topic. So you're gonna get some folks that are really polarized one way or the other that come. But that really wasn't the case here. I mean, you, you had a, you had a blend. And I don't know that we've really, you know, it seems like when you get into the, get up and testify at the mic is where you get the more polarized activity. The open house sessions allow that dialogue, which is what, which is why we kind of like it, at least, especially at this, this stage of a project, because it's, it's somewhat of a disarming opportunity just to kind of talk about it without having to have your three minutes in either your for or against. And so at open houses, we don't usually get that. We get a few people that obviously are very interested or concerned about the topic. We get a broad spectrum, they're just here to kind of learn about it. And so I think it's, it's, we haven't had a real polarizing experience. I've, and I have received a couple of phone calls, I've encouraged them, or really just one. Again, very concerned, encouraged them to come, they weren't able to attend, but I encouraged them to, to visit the website, fill out the survey online. And they were appreciative of that opportunity and so they would take advantage of that, so.
But these open houses, do, does it usually get in the newspaper? Was this in the newspaper?
It was. There was a brief in the art, in the paper this morning. It was also in their, like, meeting calendar, what's happening.
To be a really careful newspaper person, I'm amazed at what I can miss. And I, and the paper's pretty small.
I did not see it.
Yeah, there, there's, I read it online electronically, so I don't read the printed copy, so I don't know where it appeared there. I did see it was a brief and, you know, and, and I had to call the reporter on Tuesday 'cause we hadn't really gotten any feedback. I hadn't received any calls after we pushed out the press release, except from the Argonaut, Kaylee W. They were up on Tuesday. But I reached out to the Daily News, tried to get at least a brief mention of it. But they, they're anticipating a, a more in-depth follow-up coming on Friday, so.
Are you sending press releases to KRFP too?
I, Jen's our PIO that manages all that distribution, so I don't know.
Maybe a good one to make sure.
I mean, I, I think they had a list of 25 or 30 folks they sent it to, so I guess we'll check with, with.
Sounds like the public sector.
Probably.
Check with Jen.
Okay, so we had a good session. We'll get some more results here and probably late in March, we'll get another public input opportunity.
Yeah, so what I'm anticipating is that second meeting in February, we'll do a review of the information survey data we received so far. And then the commission can decide how they wish to proceed.
Okay, okay. Alright, so moving on to a review of prior discussion of the commission projects for 2014. So last time, we talked about it and commissioners raised a couple of sort of subtopics. And the thought was, since several of you had missed, we'd just bring it back and see where the subtopics landed as well. And, and that this is, these are big things. Mostly they're really directed to us from city council. Certainly if we wanted to add some kind of a topic that was in the scope, we'd need to probably bring it up and talk to council about it when we have our joint meeting. But anyway, thank you, Bill.
So these were just the two last slides. And so I'm just starting on the one that's the final list. This was really the recap of the joint meeting with the city council and the commission that occurred in May of last year. And so we went through and we identified the projects. What was the final list was kind of the final commission project list that this city council and the commission agreed would be kind of the, the projects we'd work on in the, the upcoming year and some of these beyond because of the nature of scope of the projects. And so then we, so I just, just to kind of give a frame of reference of where we ended that conversation with the council and commission. And then looking at, looking ahead to 2014 and really just, it was the first meeting of the year and kind of wanted to refocus kind of where we were heading this year and some of the major projects we had identified and see if there's anything else that we, you know, wasn't on the list that we should be thinking about. And so that, looking ahead to 2014, these were really the, you know, what I see as the bulk of the work of the commission coming up next year. So obviously the Unified Code Project, Nuttinian Zoning Code is, is a priority and will be a continued focus from staff to try to get some more substantial progress this year on that project. And so that'll include updates of the subdivision code and development standards. I put a note, you know, regarding the stormwater provisions, that was an item that was added to the list last year in the number five. And there are some. And there are some complications on that topic with EPA and, and they're changing their permitting process and it's now going onto a general permit. Our permit, stormwater permit application's been under review now for that two to three year time period and still, we still don't have a permit and now they've changed their system to now where they're not gonna be individually issuing community specific permits but having a kinda general permit process. So, we're still trying to understand what that means with the stormwater program. But anyhow, those are all, you know, elements that will be incorporated underneath the Unified Code Project. And I know that we had a discussion about a possible institutional zoning district. I think that's, the review of the university district is on our list underneath the Unified Code Project and looking at that opportunity also fits underneath that, that topic of really looking at updating, consolidating, cleaning up the zoning districts themselves as part of the Unified Code Project. We do have a new item that really wasn't on the list, was added due to this discussion between the city council and county commissioners about the area city impact and the land division standards. So, we will be probably beginning at the next meeting, reviewing the area city impact and the boundary location and beginning to work on identifying recommendations that this body would like to make to the city council regarding the area city impact and that renegotiation effort that we've just kinda formally begun here just before the holiday time, well, it was in October, I guess. And then, we've discussed, there's another kinda key piece to the ACI discussion in the city's transportation planning effort, because that, that transportation plan is going to be evaluating the ring road concept, which is always the, the key focal point of contention whenever we start talking about the area city impact between the city and the county. And the transportation study is going to be evaluating the anticipated benefit of that facility. And they've modeled it, so they'll be taking all the traffic and looking at the travel times and the different routes that are available and say, well, how much traffic are we really gonna be pulling out of the core if this was in place? And what's the relative cost of benefit of that facility? And I think that they're gonna say that it may be somewhat limited, just looking, having seen some early modeling results. And so, that may change the conversation or the count, or the city's policy towards that transportation facility. And if that's the case, then let's, let's have the council have that opportunity to discuss that before we do all the blood, bloodletting of the ACI discussion. So, we did discuss that with, between the council and the county board commissioners at, at the early stage, where they're aware of kinda why we're taking it a little bit slow in the renegotiation. We really don't have any timeframe, we just had to start, once somebody asks to renegotiate, you had to start it. But there's really, in a amicable renegotiation process, there's no timeframe from which you get to have it completed. And so, we're, we're gonna let that kinda work its way out, try to answer some questions about whether the city still feels that's, that's the transportation policy that we want to pursue. And if not, obviously that will help in the possible renegotiation discussions if that's the case. So, I, I really wanted to kinda have that play itself out before that change occurred. So, that's a new item that wasn't on the list that we will be looking at this year, obviously ADU project, we just talked about in detail this evening, and the city entry beautification project, which includes the zoning review of the north main area, pulling in that expansion of the main street to E Street, or the, from the South Cuplet to E Street.
So, my two embedded, my two questions that I sent out this week are really embedded in, in number one and number four.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to kinda make sure.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll, I've got a schedule for our next meeting, first meeting in February. I'm having Mike do a evaluation of the existing zoning on the north main corridor, looking at the number of conforming uses, non-conforming uses, conforming structures, non-conforming structures underneath the MB, and then looking at different potentials on the districts that would be more consistent with the downtown theme, whether it was CB, GB, or UMC, and really looking at, you know, what's the policy direction we want to go in that corridor, which, what zoning district would help us achieve that? And, you know, then we could take a look at any recommendations to change the zoning. But we're gonna look at, obviously, what, what we would be the outcome, how many non-conforming structures or uses would be underneath existing as compared to the zoning change. So, whenever we've done these reviews, you've seen our kinda preliminary analysis about how things are today under the existing zoning, if we're looking to change that policy, what are the potential implications that would come out of that? And then we'll, we'll reevaluate that. So, that'll be happening here, coming along. And then I just had, you know, a question, is there anything else that the commission felt that needed to be addressed that was not, you know, on those lists? And, but I guess that's looking ahead to this year and lots of fun stuff to do.
Good, thank you. The last item here is a discussion, yeah, sorry.
On area of impact, do you get a chance to talk to others like staff people in the state of Idaho and have a sense of how area of impact is sort of impacting other?
Same situation everywhere.
Just the same everywhere?
Yeah, yeah, just, just this general jurisdictional, you know, tension.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah, it is. I think, you know, the, U of I did a kind of an ACI review, reviewed agreements, how frequently they're being updated, how well they're working, you know. I think the conclusions of that study were pretty similar to our incident, you know, to how things function here. There's just, it's not a, you know, not the smoothest thing in the world, but probably maybe the best, you know, options available. And they had some, they had some recommendations of, of things to consider as part of that process, but I, I mean, I think that tension exists really everywhere. It doesn't tend to exist, I mean, I don't think you have that tension between, for example, Latah County and the small cities, you know, Troy or Genesee, but you do see it in the growth centers, 'cause that's where you kinda get that, get that, so, you know, it's, I think you see the same, same situation in many communities across the state.
Probably have the same rubs whether you have the mechanism there or not.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it is, it's just, yeah.
Well, we could be court of land, they just run up to the other city boundaries, so then they have nowhere to go.
That solves that problem.
That's why they started to look at.
You, you, certainly if you've got an aggressive annexation policy, that's the, you know, that, that clears it up really quickly, but.
Whether it makes more peace is a different issue.
Anexation authority in the state is actually, is somewhat limited, you know, cities doing forced annexations, especially for properties that, you know, aren't receiving any type of services, there, it's, it's not easy to do.
Pretty much it happened that way in Boise, except for the east side. I mean, they ran up against Meridian, I mean, they got real aggressive and boom, they hit Meridian, and then boom, they hit Eagle.
Yeah.
And.
And then the legislature changed the, changed our annexation authority to try to curtail Boise's annexation activities as a result.
Well, Boise was so much more powerful than our own town, has to be a little bit more thoughtful about it, because we don't, we don't have that, when you're growing at three and a half percent per year, you, you sort of have, I don't know, I think it's like being on steroids.
Oh, yeah, well, the whole Treasure Valley was that way and so it was a land grab to, you know, in those intervening areas to see what city could grab it first.
Anyway, it's probably just a rhetorical question, thanks.
So, the last item here is, originates out of a question Kurt asked at our last meeting, which was, we meet at 7:30 historically, have we considered changing and meeting at seven o'clock? And so, this is an opportunity to discuss your class schedule or other reason that it can't happen or reasons that it's desirable one way or the other.
I'm getting old, just about a half hour early is has a lot of a yield.
Kurt was hoping that I would run this meeting much faster than I have and a half hour head start would've been good, okay.
Do you want that minutes, Kurt?
He's getting old.
Well, I'm teaching the course that I inherited from Nels, an hour earlier in the day and so by this, I'm noticing tonight that I'm really tired right now. I would love to start a half hour.
I was one of the stronger proponents of the 7:30 time back, back when I was employed and back when I had kids to help feed.
Makes dinner more relaxing, but.
Yeah, right, and, you know, I no longer am employed, so that removes that constraint. I certainly will not oppose moving to seven o'clock. Consistency with seven o'clock starting times for city meetings makes sense. I've occasionally seen people arrive here for a P and Z meeting and.
Half hour early.
Half hour early and wondering where everybody is.
I was always against a seven because, for a slightly different reason than, when you teach a studio, it's over at 5:30 and if you're into something, that means that you really don't leave the office till six and that meant, it was really hard for me for quite a few years to think about making a seven o'clock meeting.
And I have that problem personally now, too. I have it on both ends.
So, I would need, whatever Wendy wants, I'd go with. Right now, I'm like, hey, you wanna have a meeting at 3:30 in the afternoon?
Can I get a second for three thirty?
Whatever, so I'm, I'm going with Wendy, I, I cast my vote however.
Wendy's got a proxy vote there.
Oh, gosh, I have all this pressure on me. I bet you that's the good.
Jim, I think you were.
I'm okay with the seven and I, the advantage that I see is when we have a lot on the agenda, we have a public meeting that's well-attended and, and a lot of people voicing their opinions, things run to, you know, closer to 10 o'clock at night and that, and that's getting late. And so, if we could advance for those kinda situations, I think that would be.
A half hour's useful.
Useful, but I, I'm not opposed to 7:30 now. I mean, it's, it's okay with me. I'm more likely to be, not have work conflict the later it is, so.
Okay. It's a good comment, though. I, I do agree that we, when we have hearings, we've gone, we're the late, probably one of the latest commissions, so they thought of being able to get over a little sooner. Probably makes good sense, so I could easily support seven.
I'm easy, whatever. I really don't, I'm a.
What I'm hearing is no opposition to seven, some.
Somebody might be a few minutes late once in a while when our class runs late, or at least in my case.
Right, so there's that or, or finishing up something to get here. So, how about this? Let's switch to seven, beginning at our February meeting, the February 12 meeting. And let's stay with that, having made that choice, let's stay with that at least until, let's say, September, when we get new class schedules and, it really didn't work for, for several reasons. We lived with it, but we'll reevaluate again, if, if it comes up, I mean, if it seems to be a problem one way or another, okay? So, seven o'clock for our February 12 meeting. Great.
Did we miss Unified Code? Did we give you a chance to chat?
I did jump over it. You are, you are right.
Yeah, and I gave Nels a warning in advance that we've been swamped getting ready for this and we've not, I don't really have much.
I didn't want you to cry or anything.
I am not gonna cry. I'm fading, I think, my rest of the group, 'cause I'm getting over a bit of a cold, so that is something we can certainly continue at the next meeting.
Thank you, Nels, for, for clarifying that. But is there anything else prior to our adjournment? All right, thank you very much.
Do you have any other content?
I don't think so. I mean, the fact is, it still belongs to the city, the city would make the decision. It was just some of the earlier conversations.